So good morning, everybody, and welcome to this session today. What makes a good business board? My name is Zoe Gordon, and I am working at Essex County Council in a role to support the development of a future business board, the role title is Business Board Communications Engagement Manager. I've recently moved into this role, having worked for 10 years at the South East Local Enterprise Partnership, which covered our county of Greater Essex, together with Kent and Sussex. And what we really wanted to do today was bring together some expert speakers from across the country who are involved in this type of work with other organisations, with other local authorities and other business partnerships, to hear about how this relationship between the public and private sector can work well, to hear some good experiences, and to share knowledge and to empower us all to work better in partnership between our business community and our local authorities. So today's session is about exploring those foundations for good engagement, how we can have private sector-led advocacy for our area, and how by working together we can support local growth, jobs and future employment. Hopefully, today you're going to hear some positive stories about outcomes achieved in other places, and how we can sort of do more together for our local economy. We will have a mix of people and experiences on the call today, some people who've been involved in the Local Enterprise Partnership, some people who don't even really know what that is, or sort of how public-private sector have worked together across Greater Essex before. And that's okay. I think what we're trying to do is get new businesses interested in this agenda. And by sharing and informing, hopefully you're all feeling empowered and comfortable to be involved in this space. I'll give a little bit of a background to where we are with this work in Greater Essex. And then I'll hand over to our fantastic speakers, who I'll introduce as we go through. Work to develop a business board in Greater Essex has been ongoing since last year, when the Local Enterprise Partnerships were discontinued by the previous government. We knew that we'd need to find a future route for the public and private sector to work together across our area. And there've been conversations and sort of work progressing to develop this since that time. We have had work ongoing in the area, looking at a devolution deal for Greater Essex, which was taking place last year, that was put on hold. And given the political changes that we've seen, both locally and nationally, we're now in a place where those conversations may maybe start. The new government that we have seem to be very supportive of devolved working and powers in local areas. And we know that to be successful in that space, it is really important to demonstrate a relationship with the business community and how we will be working together. So in recent months, there's been a fair bit of work looking at how a process might work to develop a business board, looking at sort of composition and a recruitment process and that sort of thing. And some discussions have taken place with some of you, with, you know, some people on the call have, we have been speaking to you about this opportunity, other people will be totally new to this. So work to establish something in this space in Greater Essex is ongoing, together with our political partners. And what we hope to do today is put us all in a place where we can be inspired by what's happening elsewhere in the country and feel empowered to create something that will make a difference for Greater Essex. So I'll introduce our first speaker, who is Mark Breton, from what is now the Business Board Network. Mark has extensive experience, having been the Chair of the LET Network, so the Local Enterprise Partnership National Network, which supported local enterprise partnerships previously, and also having been the Chair of the Hertfordshire Local Enterprise Partnership himself for a number of years. Mark is businessman himself, has been involved in a number of different organisations, he can tell you more about it himself, but has an excellent understanding and connection about how business boards can work with local and national government to improve the local growth policy and to really influence what we're seeing coming out of national government, different programmes, investments. And he's really at the forefront of that, engaging regularly with ministers and with officials in Whitehall. And so, Mark, over to you.
Okay, thank you. Zoe, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. I'm going to share my screen. I would appreciate it if you could make sure that you could actually see it, because we've all been here before and not seen it. So you should be able to see some slides coming up. Yep. Okay.
Yes, I can, yeah.
Yeah, brilliant, okay. So what I'd like to do, I've only got three or four slides today, is I'd like to do a couple of things, really. I'd like to give you some context and talk about how all this fits together, particularly with the evolution of local enterprise partnerships into business boards, particularly with the new government in place. But as we do that, I want to really help you ask the question, why should you do this? Why should you be part of this? You know, what influence and what difference can you make? And at the end of all of this, I've got my contact details up on the screen, and I'd be very happy to share my personal experience with you. It's back in, I think, October 2015, I got an unexpected call from Hertfordshire County Council HR, asking me whether I wanted to become involved as the potential Chair for the Hertfordshire Local Enterprise Partnership. And I had no idea, like a lot of people at the time, what LETS did. And in that intervening period, between when I joined the board in Jan 16, I took my job as the Chair on the day of the Brexit vote, taking over the national network in 2019, nearly five years ago, I have seen firsthand the benefit of business working alongside local government, not in competition, but in a great partnership, bringing alongside education, further and higher education, and the not-for-profit sector. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that, but as I say, we've not got too long today, I'm very happy to take questions and chat a bit later on. But just to give you... Hello, why am I not getting to the next slide, I wonder? There we go. So just to give you some context, the LETS were created by a mixture of Michael Hasseltine and Eric Pickles, right back when the government, the Conservative government hadn't even taken shape, because they were frustrated at the pace of local growth. And in that intervening period, we had between us, working with our partners, about 20 billion of public sector money, matched by the private sector, very, very heavily, to deliver some fantastic interventions in local economies. And I've had a couple of sessions in the past with Southeast LEP, so I had some understanding of the impact that this has had, particularly in the area in Essex where we're talking today. But a decision was taken as part of devolution last year, that we would no longer be directly funded. Not because there were issues with delivery, but because they wanted to change the emphasis of who owned the keys to the funding and how that would be deployed. But there were one or two important things that were part of this. And one of the things that was a key element in the design for a devolution programme was the importance of retaining an interest for business and making sure that business interest was effective and had a proper voice. But how to do that, the choice of doing that, was left to a local decision. And we have examples across the country, where we have business boards that have a full seat at the table, a partial seat at the table, and where we still have local enterprise partnerships on an arms-length relationship with their local upper-tier councils. What does this mean? This means that business is there to help, because at the end of the day, we are the provider of jobs, that democratic accountability continues, but also that those choices are made locally. And that's absolutely the right decision to make. I think there's a balance to be struck here. But making sure that local decisions are empowered is a key part of this. There are a number of ways where we have demonstrably added value, and I hope we'll continue to add value over that over the next period of government, particularly if you listen to some of the strategies and ideas that are coming out of the new ministers. If you look at what Jonathan Reynolds has said about reinvigorating industrial strategy, and Angela Rayner talking about local growth plans. We have the ingredients for this for many, many years embedded in our LET programmes. The creation of local economic strategies in partnership with our local authority colleagues, the evidence base that underpins good decision-making, these are national assets. And we've written to these ministers to remind them, and we've met with them too, that we've got some great things to give them a local start. And making sure that those are relevant for business is a really important part of what we're seeking to do here. Because that encourages business to do a number of things. It encourages them to invest and encourages them to take risks. And I know this from personal experience, I've seen what this looks like, and I've seen the impact of this, particularly in the area where I live, with some of the fantastic investment in creative media, in life sciences, and the same thing will happen in the regions right across the country. But the other thing that matters here is what we do and help for local people, and making sure that the opportunity is there for local people to realise their ambition. And helping to shape courses that are relevant and impactful for local people, that local government can help support, and that the FE and HG colleges are able to deliver, should be what we need to do to encourage a future pipeline for people and their skills. The other thing that we've done very successfully over that period is add the business discipline of looking at investment cases and business cases. And when we've allocated money to people and helped our local authorities allocate money to people, making sure that they deliver the commitments that they signed up to when they took the opportunity to bid. And helping to shape all of that through the growth hubs that we had, particularly for small businesses, is again a key part of what Reynolds is there saying in his programme. So I can't emphasise enough how much a role we have to play here and how much you can help if you take part here to really invigorate your local economies. My last slide here just reminds us what I'm here to do today. We are an entity which has evolved from being the network with the changes to business board to help accelerate the evolution from LETS to the local business boards, to share our learning, and we run a number of sessions with chairs already, but also to look for opportunities where we can get on the new government's agenda. So you would have seen the announcements in the last 10 days or so about the stepping up for the British Business Bank. We facilitated last week a meeting for chairs with the Chair of the Business Bank and two of his senior directors. So these are great examples of where we can help. Again, I'm here to help you understand and take some of those opportunities yourselves. I've had the most rewarding and impactful time since I joined in 2016, and I can tell you, I'm really very happy that I took that call. I have a very personal view to finish. I think business has a role in the evolution of our economies to create opportunity and hope. And I think by stepping up here and taking part and helping our local people to really get engaged and realise some of their ambitions, I think this is one of the key opportunities for us to help the new government deliver its local growth plans. Zoe, thank you.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Mark.
And there's my dearest, Zoe has them, so.
Yeah, that's fantastic. If, you know, if people want to take those now, or I'll share them post-event as well for anybody that might like to follow up with Mark. And great to hear your personal reflections as to, you know, how you've benefited from this as well. And it is, you know, we are in such changing economic times with a new government and a new landscape. But it's really good to hear from somebody who's close to that agenda. And I think also, I think it's fair to say, sort of has those good relationships with all governments that we've seen, all different versions. We've had many different local growth ministers over your time and involvement, but you've always managed to develop good relationships. And I think that's testament to the approach that we take and the work that's been done by the network and now being taken forward by the Business Board Network. So thank you for joining us today.
I've put my email address in the chat anyway, but thank you very much.
Brilliant, fantastic, thanks. So we'll move on now to our next speaker, who is David Williams. From, well, David is a lawyer by trade, but has been involved in what was previously the D2N2 Local Enterprise Partnership, covering Derbyshire and Nottinghamshire, and has recently evolved into the East Midlands County Combined Authority. And David is taking up the role of Chair for their interim Business Advisory Board as the landscape evolves in that area. So really good to hear from David about his experiences, and I'll hand over to you now, David.
Thanks. Morning, everybody. I'm glad you couldn't quite explain it, and maybe I can't either. I'm the slightly dangerous addition to a forum like this, because I'm unscripted and I'm unelected and I'm not employed, so I can say what I feel. I come from the East Midlands. So the first part of the context and history is what the hell is the East Midlands? Nobody's quite sure. We're not quite sure. Therefore, government's not quite sure. We're probably best described as being Derbyshire, Nottinghamshire and Leicestershire. We sometimes add Northamptonshire, but they prefer to be in the home counties. We sometimes add Lincolnshire, but they prefer to be in the Netherlands. So at our core, we are three counties with three major cities within them. But we don't necessarily all get on historically. We compete historically. And we give, at the very least, a confused voice to Westminster and Whitehall as opposed to a unified voice historically. That's led to failed DEVO attempts in the past. And in the first iteration of our D2N2 Local Enterprise Partnership, we were not particularly successful, I think I would say, because we spent too much time corralling local politics as opposed to getting on with the day job. Second iteration of the D2N2 LET, which has been led by Will Morley, who's on the call as well, was much, much more successful, and we had a unified business voice, which worked very well with our four upper-tier leaders and our 20 odd district authorities in putting together a focused approach to actually what we wanted and needed. And I think the biggest success we had during that time, which is something I'm now anxious to preserve, is that we corralled and convened politicians, businesses, third sector leaders into identifying what were the most significant projects which would give the biggest bangs for our book in our region. So as opposed to, you know, defraying our funding on odd new bus stops from here and there, we concentrated on where we would get the biggest economic growth and create the highest number of jobs on a sustainable basis. And we were really successful, really, really successful. So the Better Building Fund, we were, I think, the fourth biggest drawdown in the country. And that comes from a place where Westminster and Whitehall never knew what we wanted. And the constant complaint was, they never knew what we wanted. They now know exactly what we want. When we went through our failed attempt at DEVO, it very much failed, I think, because we weren't speaking with one voice. We were speaking with many voices and many disaffected voices. Second iteration of DEVO, the four upper-tier authority leaders, who were not all of the same political persuasion, came together very, very strongly, and the districts behind them, and actually put together a very clear plan for what devolution would look like. And front and centre of that conversation about devolution was making sure that the business voice remained involved. And front and centre of the constitution of our Combined Authority is that there will be a business board chaired by a businessperson, which happens to be me. So my role now for our mayor is to, one, gain her trust, so that she trusts the voice of business, and two, with her, appoint a business board. And the remit of the business board is almost the most important thing here, which will take a strong lead in setting the economic strategy for the region. But we're not sitting around a table just to have a chat, we are sitting around the table with the mayor, setting the economic strategy for the region. So we'll be, over the next month, six weeks, we'll, I think, putting together a business board which will be as diverse as possible, as representative sectorially as possible, as representative geographically as possible, but pulling in some of the best voices in the region. So I'm at least as interested in getting the best voice as I am as getting the best business, because we've got to have support, we've got to have challenge, we've got to have credibility. And the mayor is absolutely 100% behind it. The mayor is a complete supporter of the business board being as strong as possible. But I very much hope that a lot of the learnings that we took from LET land, the good and the bad, but particularly the good, we're going to take forward. And the really good is about helping the politicians to hear what business needs as a priority to support economic growth in the region. Because as Mark says, it's from business that economic growth will largely come. But I feel pretty positive about it. It's not without its ups and downs, it's not without its excitement, it's not without its disagreement. But having worked at this for about five or six years now, it feels right and it feels good that the business voice is being listened to on our patch, and we've helped to convene a voice for our region generally, which is now being heard. We have been historically just about the most underfunded region per capita in the UK. And I don't know if Essex feels the same, but sometimes we feel as far from Westminster and Whitehall as it's possible to be without being on a different planet. I think we've got beyond that now. What happens at this point is Will steps into the conversation as our LET Chief Executive and corrects everything I've said that's wrong. Will?
You got the bit about things being better under my command. Absolutely correct, David, well done. No, thanks for your kind words. And I will speak as LET Chief Exec, I'm also now a Director in the Combined Authority. And I think three key things that I've learned over the last five years for me is firstly, hang on in there. There will be bits of process to get through, David's suffering this at the minute, because LETS were private sector-led, but now we're moving into a combined authority world that's public sector-led. There are a few more governance hurdles to jump through, and the local authorities have to be more risk-averse than the LETS were encouraged to be. But I think you've heard it from David, the journey's worth it, because this is a really interesting opportunity. The timing, let's assume that the Labour Government will be in for 10 years, and they are genuinely consulting on what to do about the economy. There's never been a time like this during my career where I think we can genuinely speak and influence, to speak to and influence government around economic policy. They, excuse me, they will expect, as David said, regions to really understand themselves, to be able to articulate what's the ask and offer to government. And I don't know what, Zoe, you've picked up, but I'm hearing really they want each region, Combined Authority, LET area, whatever, to come through with probably no more than three big-ticket items, you know. But we're all going to say green, but what's one of the other two things that Essex can do that do better than other places? And I think as board members or prospective board members, as an executive, I would say, please, please be challenging. Because there's nothing more unhelpful to me than a board that just nods through everything that I say. Because then you just get the world according to will. If you're being involved in a business board, please represent yourself, represent your place, represent your sector, and don't let bureaucrats like me get away with it.
I think we're done, Zoe.
That's wonderful. Thank you. So really inspiring words from you both there. Really, I feel like you're a really good double act, actually, both of you. So very entertaining as well, but it's good to hear.
I'm more calm, he's wise, and thank you.
It's good to hear, you know. These things aren't always easy, is probably what I would take as a headline from what you've both just said, in that, you know, you've tried and tried, tweaked and tried again. And, you know, the space that you've managed to get into now, you know, you're in a really good place, you're in a place where you're being heard by government and where you feel, you know, that you've come together. And that is not easy to achieve. And I think Essex, we're in, you know, an earlier version of our story. But I think it's just really good to hear these positive outcomes and the sort of honesty and reality of some of these things, really. So thank you very much, and that's much appreciated.
I think, Zoe, at times we have been disgustingly honest, eerily honest with each other, public to private and private to public.
So those relationships, being able to build that trust, does that just take time or any other?
Time and patience, really, but on both sides. Because it's not natural for the public sector and the private sector to understand each other. We assume there's an us and them, and there really isn't. We've all got the same interest at heart. You know, why do I do this? Because my business will thrive more if I'm in a successful region. So there's an obvious reason for me to be here. Why should public sector support me? Because they want successful businesses employing people. So it, you know, it is a win-win, but we don't always see it that way.
Yeah, brilliant. Thank you so much. So we'll move on now to our final speaker for the session. So we're joined by Mark Pennington, who is the new Chair of the Suffolk Business Board. So very helpful, as Suffolk is one of our neighbours, and very important neighbour as well, with some really good opportunities on the horizon, linking with the Freeport and so on. And I think it'd just be really helpful to hear, Mark, from your experiences, similar economy to parts of Essex, and, you know, how you go about things and your transition and your evolution in your part of the world. So over to you, Mark.
Zoe, thank you. And one thing I'm really encouraged by is that there's over 30 people on this call showing an interest in the future of the Essex Business Board. And that is a great place to start from. And by the way, William, I've got castle envy now. I think it's pretty wonderful, that backdrop. But anyway, seriously, I have worked in the Essex economy, as well as the Suffolk economy, because I used to chair the New Anglia LET, which is Norfolk and Suffolk. But economies don't really have boundaries. And so with Essex, I mean, I, before I took early retirement, I worked at Stansted, I campaigned with Jonathan, who was great to see on this call, along with Norfolk's and Essex and Suffolk for the Great Eastern Mainline Investment. We got the new trains, but we now need the infrastructure. But it was a lesson to me over too many years around this track of the power there is in the public and private sector working really well together. And when the public and private sector, together with education, the voluntary sector, health, local authorities, all come together and work with one focus and one aim and direction, the magic can really happen. And it doesn't just happen because it says so on a bit of paper that's all sent round on an email. It's about what the other speakers have said, it's winning that trust and being hugely respectful of the expertise in local authorities and the economic development teams, in the councillors, as well as being respectful of the huge influence of the business voice. Personally, I was sorry that our particular LET was one of those that joined all the others in its demise, because business felt it had a voice around a decision-making table. And we've all been around the track so often, and in my case for too long, to know that, I've been to far too many talking shops, I've sat round too many meeting tables in small heated rooms that have come out, sort of everybody feeling they've sort of said what they've got to say. But I always say, so what? So what are we going to get out of the meeting? Who's going to go away and do what, by when? And when they've done it, what are they going to do next to drive the future of the economy? So that's the spirit by which the Suffolk Business Board was gathered together. We, when the LETS had the demise, the County Council moved very quickly to advertise the business board. We had 60 applications for 11 places. To a man and woman, they were all hugely qualified to sit around that table. What I found refreshing was, or is, is that yes, and I say this really with deepest respect, and I know all of them personally, they're friends, usual suspects around the table, hugely valuable. But what was equally exciting was to have other people around the table who hadn't even occurred to them to take part in a business board or something like this, to focus on economic development strategy. So I was looking for sparky people, disruptors, people with energy and new ideas, as I think William said, people of diversity across the economy, but also personal diversity. And we've ended up with 11 people whose energy and passion around the table as chair and sometimes quite challenged to harness, but they're brilliant. And what we've done also is we decided how we chose our 11 out of 60 was to focus on particular sectors. And the vast majority of those who weren't successful in joining as a board member, they all are engaged in other work streams that we've got, such as on energy, transport, whatever it is. And so their particular skills are honing in on, and the big thing of the business board, which I won't go down the rabbit hole on, but just to mention, is there's so much going on in the economy, enterprise zones, innovation hubs, initiatives on skills, that people see and feel a noise of information, if and when they know where to go and get it. What we are wanting to do is to get our arms around the Suffolk economy, to say to businesses, large and small, you know, you don't need your handhelds, you just need a hand up. And where can you go to skill your, to look for talent, to look for skills and training and access to funding? That's why Mark's session on the Business Bank last week for chairs was incredibly helpful and paying tribute to Mark, or the Marks on the on the call from the network, they are really opening doors in government and getting and getting help directly to the business boards, really invaluable. So there's lots of support around that. There's also masses of support and expertise in local authorities who are working hard in their own areas. But this is a moment, I think, for big picture thinking. What we've got, and it's been said before, I don't want to repeat it very much, but a new government, so far so good with the new government, we're only what, four weeks in? But it is so far so good. There's energy, there's passion, there's ideas, some are popular, some are not. But what the government is reaching out and saying is, our agenda is economic growth, we want to drive that. So it's no good grumpy East Anglia sitting there in a very different set of circumstances, saying, well, it's not fair, the government doesn't invest in us enough, when that contributes us to the treasury, we can go off and be grumpy and nobody will listen to us. But what is really essential is what in Essex and Suffolk is the most exciting thing? What is the USP of that economy? And how can we help the government to succeed in its important agenda for us all? But what do we want back from them to help us achieve that for them and for UK PLC? And so what we're not in the business of in Suffolk, and I hope you won't be in Essex, and I know many of the people on the call, and I know the Essex economy, it's dynamic, it's diverse, it's exciting, it's full of ideas and entrepreneurship and innovation. And that's what the government needs to see. What is the USP of Essex? In Suffolk, we've got a 19 billion pound economy, we want to grow that and some. But how are we going to do that? Focusing on our sectors, we have many world-class businesses basis such as BT, where worldwide broadband was invented, where there's an innovation hub looking after 150 small businesses and entrepreneurs. So all of those big businesses that are stepping up and we want to make sure that we make them part of, part of our economy. So we want to play to our strengths. And what our economic strategy, I hope, touching wood as I speak to you, we don't want another analysis of the Suffolk economy that's going to look very good on a set of slides, on a nice glossy brochure that can sit on all of our shelves and we can say, well, that's job done, what's next? What we want is something sharply focused, 12 pages long, something like that. What are the six or 10 things, no more, that are going to transform the Suffolk economy and drive economic growth for UK PLC? So who's going to do what, by when? And so we want to make sure it's very action-focused, not just full of analysis and charts and lines that go up and down. We want it to be an evidence-based strategy. But we want to show the government a fresh energy from Suffolk that it perhaps hasn't seen before. Somebody said on the call, I think it was, was it William, about about the identity of our economy. We're up against the sort of the northern powerhouse and the, and the North East and the West Midlands and all these very muscular economies so-called. But you know, our economies are muscular as well and achieving. But what they haven't got is that precious identity that people would say East Anglia and they think the world stops at Cambridge. You know, or London, and there's nothing to the north of London. So we have got to work extra hard to define our place in the in the economic strategic direction of the country. And show us that we're real leaders in doing this. And I think that is really, really important. So summary, big potential, lots to do. I'm saying to the business people on the call, please, please get involved. Your voice, our voice as business leaders is so hugely important. You know, represent your sector, David said, you know, he's involved because it's good for his business. He's also involved, I'm sure, because he wants, you know, the UK PLC competing and winning in the international markets. But to have your voice around the table, particularly around the dynamic Essex economy is so important. So I hope these various presentations have influenced you or helped you to devote time, invest time. What business boards are is hugely respectful of the time of everyone. We've all got 101 other things we can do, other than come on calls like this or or attend business boards or whatever it might be. But this is truly worth it. Because if your business voice isn't heard, that will cede the ground to people who, and to influences that aren't as positive as ours. And we have important things to say and we have important influence to wield. And, you know, if you look at Suffolk geography, as I look at the Suffolk one, you know, three weeks ago, it was all solid blue. We now have an exciting, dynamic, different politics here in Suffolk, which is a mixture of Conservative, Labour and Green. Only one can, only one member of parliament survived the cold three weeks ago. And we've got seven new ones. So reaching out to them, reaching out to the levers of the economy, reaching out to FE and HE, reaching out and getting people in local authorities involved around the table. And my final please, Zoe, is let's not get around these tables and find that local authorities are competing against business, are competing against leaders of health and education in HE and FE. What we all have in common, as we gather around the table on that first occasion, is a strong wish to make the economy succeed. So let's think big picture. Let's think really what we can do for ourselves as the Essex Suffolk economy and drive those initiatives and those ideas forward. Zoe, I hope that's helpful. I suppose my headline, my elevator pitch is get involved. And thank you for even being interested to be on this call. That's a major step forward. And it will hearten Zoe and her senior colleagues at the county council and other local authority representatives. But I'm saying, please take this over the line and take it to the next step. And thank you for inviting me to be part of this initial call. Good luck.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Mark. And it's really heartening to hear your experiences, I think, given the similarity of the Suffolk economy to, especially the north part of the Essex economy. And obviously your experience previously in the Essex economy as well. I do feel like we have a good understanding to the types of businesses that we have here, the types of challenges. Hopefully, those of you on the call, you will feel inspired by what you've heard today and sort of invigorated to be involved in future arrangements in Essex. We do have a short amount of time and opportunity for questions. If anybody is brave enough and you do want to ask any questions of our speakers today. You know, please just either drop it into the chat or put your hand up if you want to ask anything to do at this time. Laura.
Hi, yeah, I was wondering, potentially a bit of a cynical question, but it's leading on to my next question, about Essex elections and timeline in light of the business board, because obviously we've got the elections in May. And if that all changes, would priorities etcetera for the shape, look and feel of the board differentiate? And secondly, it's a point on, so yeah, small business representation and how that can be fairly done. Because I always think Essex and the local councils, I know Chelmsford and Moldon, do exceptionally well at knowing the small businesses and medium businesses around the county very well. But it's how the voice gets brought up in a structured way that I'm not really understanding of, except from having representation on the board. Because obviously it's such a wide range of people across a wide range of like cities, rural, yeah. You're muted, Zoe. Sorry.
Sorry, just talking away there. So yeah, I will try and open this up to Mark and Mark and David. So I think the question is, so obviously we've had, we local elections have a certain timetable, don't they? So we've had new elected leaders in both Southend and Thirwick this year, just before the general election. And we've seen a change in representation in those places, they're two of our operatives. And the third operative being Essex County Councilman, they have elections in April next year. So I guess, Mark and Mark and David, any reflections on how the business community keeps that sort of continuity in this space? If the politicians change and if those sorts of perspectives of those politicians change?
Yeah, I mean, Mark just alluded to it where he is in Suffolk. I mean, where I, where I sat in Hertfordshire, we were an all blue county. It's not an all blue county anymore and it changed along the way. I think we're used to adapting. We saw local authority imperatives, yes, they would change. But May is a long time away. And I don't think we can sit still and wait to get started. We have to flex all the time. So I think I would, I would get on and get started, recognizing that something might change. But business is agile and flexible. And I think it's, you know, it's fair to expect us to be respectful of what changes that they might seek to make. But I think even more important, there is, there is a consistency and a constancy here from the business perspective that should help new representation locally to get started quicker. We're doing that now with central government. I would just crack on and keep going would be my, my advice, having been through it several times since 2016.
I would agree with, with Mark.
It might be you making a humming noise, Zoe, actually.
I'm sorry.
I agree with Mark. And on our business board, we have got two representatives of the county council and two representatives of district and borough councils. And so we've got a blue county council, we've got a green and a Labour leaders on the Suffolk Business Board. And they are offering great advice and perspectives. And don't be too, don't be too shy. Politicians like people who walk through the door and say, I've got an idea, I can help you. They don't like people necessarily walking through the door saying, oh, this is wrong, that's wrong, we haven't got enough money. So I think if businesses offer a dynamic focus, local authorities will appreciate the success and leadership businesses offering and bringing to the table. On the other point, Laura, about small businesses, we're doing that in two ways. One is we have a representative of the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce. And I don't know whether the force of nature that's Denise Rositer is still chief executive of the Essex Chamber of Commerce. But, you know, we, we have a strong representation from SMEs through the Chamber of Commerce. But the other way we've done it, we've just finished a series of half a dozen workshops where we invited businesses from right across the county, we went to all geographies around the county to come and tell us what they think. This isn't going to be a strategy that's the wise, for the wisdom of 11 board members. This is a whole county approach and we had over 400 people in five workshops who came and devoted half a day of their time to telling us what they are thinking, what their challenges and opportunities are. And that felt really inclusive. And people, particularly in small businesses, felt they had an opportunity to say what they think and to influence the strategy. And we're keeping in touch with every one of those and the many more who weren't able to come, but were interested to know more. So there's a, there's an excitement, which I haven't really detected before in economic strategic planning. And we're just harnessing that as best we can.
And it's worth remembering, quite a lot of local authority council members are business people as well. And we seem to forget that and think that they're one thing or the other, and that's not really the case.
Just very quickly from me, I've never found party politics an issue at local government level. It's much more about place before politics and that's the rhetoric that this government seems, seems to be following, which is, which is refreshing. So to me, it's almost a non-issue, the colour of the leadership. Will's made a good point on your, on your other point in the chat. I would add that we will have a 12-person business board. It will be almost impossible to make it sufficiently diverse and representative, but we will do as much as we can. We tried under the LEP to have a wider committee below the board representing place, so getting everybody and his, you know, that cockapoo along. And it was about a 50-person chat at times, which was entirely useless and non-constructive, but we tried. But we just kind of have to try even harder to be diverse with our, with our 12.
Excellent. That was, well, really good answers and hopefully they, I don't know that they, you hear those a bit differently, Laura, from others that have experienced it in other places. You know, the politics and things that we have in Essex, sometimes it's challenging, but it's actually not unique to our area in Greater Essex. You know, others have that too. And, you know, if we have a strong business community who have that trust and those relationships and that consistency, I think, Mark, what you just said about the business board network, helping the new government to perform well in this space. Actually, that would be a really great place to get to, wouldn't it, if possible?
Yeah, let's hope they listen, better than the last lot, to be quite honest. I see Kirsty's asked an interesting question there about board diversity and sectors. Now, you've got diversity, inclusion and gender and all that on the one hand. And I'm just going to take it the thread that that is something which, as we appoint boards, that we are very sensitive to. We were set very strong targets for this way back because it wasn't like that. And if you look at the population and demographics, particularly of chairs, they are fundamentally changed in the last five years. They used to be nearly all, all white male. Now they are a big, they've become a big diverse crew in terms of gender and still more, still more of colour needed, but we've definitely made some progress there. On the sector element, because I went through this in Hertfordshire, we did a, as part of the local industrial strategy, we did a big sector focus. That was a big task that we did and that was done by a number of different LEPs and their successors as well. That did bring out that there were a good cross-section of different sectors. We tackled this in two ways. When we went out for board members, we were sensitive to try to find representation from the sectors that were core to our big plans, so life sciences, advanced manufacturing, creative media. I mean, there are more sound stages in Hertfordshire and so on than there will be than there are in Hollywood, you know. So there's plenty of that to do. But also at the executive level, so in the employed team level, and that will happen again, one hopes in local government, you will have sector expertise. You know, I'm also a DL and the Lord Lieutenant is very heavily into the creative film, media, film office sector in the county, which is so big and so important to develop. So I think it's, it's for us to make sure as, as chairs and chief executives that we structure the boards and the executive teams that we have around the objectives and the outcomes that we expect to see for the, for the county. And that needs, that will need choices to be made. Because, you know, I think to develop, we don't want 50 people talking shops, which is why we changed the way the network was run, because we were trying to get an answer out of 38 people, which is frankly impossible. So that would be my sort of dip here. And that's no different to what we would do if we were running our businesses. We would place our bets, a man and person accordingly, to make sure that they delivered appropriately.
That's excellent. Thank you, Mark, and thank you for sort of stepping in and answering that in the chat. I'm just going to go to Tim Price, because he's had it for a while. And then there's a couple of other questions in the chat that we'll cover in a moment. So, Tim.
Thanks, Zoe, and hopefully everyone can, can hear me. Firstly, it's hugely encouraging to see so many people on the call and business representatives specifically looking at the development of the business board in Greater Essex. I'm going to caveat my question firstly by saying, don't misinterpret this as being a negative question, but it comes from a a desire really to ensure that Greater Essex does have a true business voice and
Uh, as being a negative question, but it comes from a, a desire really to uh ensure that Greater Essex does have a, a true business voice and. Um, a business voice that's dynamic and possibly looking um at the longer term. But it's a question really to uh David and uh Mark Breton, and to a degree, Mark Pendleton touched on this when he used the phrase. Usual suspects, but um can you give us some insight, um, David and Mark, on how you avoided kind of duplication? In terms of the, the structure of the board. Um, again, you know, it would be very easy to see the structure of these boards. Uh, to satisfy kind of local micro politics, having, you know, existing business groups represented. However, you know, that does risk just effectively creating an echo chamber and dup- duplication of of effort, basically. So I'd be interested in, in how you avoided that.
Shall I go first, Mark? Uh, I'm, uh, so I'm currently putting together the, the uh, the Business Board for Emca. I have a cunning plan, which I'm not allowed to have. Um, I have got to go out to advert because that's perfectly right and proper. But a lot of the people that we would like to see on the board to get full representation won't apply to adverts. They just won't respond. So I have a cunning plan, which I've shared with the mayor and I've shared with Will and I've shared with others. To make sure it's properly sense checked, to ensure that I have. Business board, which is not the same old suspects, which is representative, um, which is diverse. But also brings in people who, a number of people on the call have said are challenging. And will provide challenge and will provide um positive support to the mayor. So. I think it needs to be planned. I don't think you can just leave it to chance. I don't think we just leave it to, to the, to the adverts and it's got to have a shape. And I'm looking at the shape on a piece of paper next to me now. Um, and if we can form that shape, I'll be pretty confident on a, on a. I sort of apply a litmus test of, you know, if, if a, a good business journalist looked at this. Would he or she make, make um mincemeat of it? And if the answer is no, th- then I think I'm pretty comfortable.
Thank you.
Any other reflections from Mark or Mark?
I'm right, I think, yeah, go on, go on, tell them, Mark. You're in the process of doing it now, so.
Yeah, we, we, um, I mean, we, we, we did go through the um ad- advertising route. Um, and as the applications were coming in, um, it was clear that there were a, a, a few people who would. Because of our personal knowledge, would be really good on the board if they were interested to join it. So. We encouraged people uh who who fell under that sort of um, uh, uh, description to, to apply. Uh, and of course, a- as ever, there's some really brilliant people out there, but they're just too busy growing and running businesses. They haven't. They've, they've got the interest, but not the time. They're time poor. Um, so it's always frustrating, but um. Uh, wh- uh, but, but what, what we're doing is, is those people, rather than say, will you commit to a, a board? Uh, and meetings and structures, uh, will you help in other ways? Are you willing to, um, so, so for example. The top fifty business leaders in Suffolk, we're going to invite them to a special session of six to eight o'clock one night and early supper on their way home. Just to begin to say to them, you know, what do you think about this direction of travel? How, oh, but you know, what, how does this relate to your business? What are your ideas? So a lighter touch, but driving sort of that inclusivity, because there's so many people that are so brilliant, you know. Uh, and and in Essex, you're full to the brim with them and just trying to get them involved in other ways if they won't commit to a board. It's, it is a challenge. It is a challenge.
No, I'd agree with that, but I think I would, you know, we, we agonized over what to do and I made some appointments to the Hertfordshire Board. About two, three years back. Um, because, you know, clearly, clearly the pressure was on to rebalance the board and we have more than one appointment to make. Um, and one of my local MPs said to me, and and, you know, the, 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 the person concerned was a colleague, said. Get the right person for the job um as well. And you have, that's a very difficult balance. We have all that in our um. In our daily business lives as well. Um, and I think at the end of the day, it's, it's incumbent upon us when we're putting a board together. Yes, it needs to be balanced. Uh, we need to encourage the right people to be there. It needs to be representative, but we need the best people to make the best impact as well. And that's always going to be a, a, a typical challenge for, for us. Um, and one of the, and the person that I got. Um, was one of the founders of Octopus Investments and what a fantastic in, in input Chris has had. Now we brought other people into the board as well. But if I hadn't been tapped on the shoulder and just said, you know, take everything into consideration, that would have been an opportunity lost for everybody. Um, so it's a very difficult balance for us to get right, but we must do it.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Thanks very much.
Excellent and great question, Tim. I think it's probably one of those things that everybody's thinking, so well done for asking. Um, we just had a few other comments in the chat around, um, sort of. Being transparent and, um, you know, having objectives for the organisation and sort of proceedings, will they all be public? I can see that a few of you have answered that and I, I think there've been definitely a few lessons learnt through the laps, but that is, um. Obviously, you know, it's good practice now, but expected, I would say also. Um, and. Local authorities obviously have, um, requirements that they need to meet around these types of discussions and. When working in partnership with local authorities is, um, essential that these discussions are transparent and open. Do, do any of our speakers have any reflections on that? I guess sometimes there are difficult conversations that you might want to have. With, um, with the local authorities before you go into an open or public meeting. Um. Is that just again down to those relationships or any other thoughts on, on that?
Yes, it is down to those relationships and, and, and the, the board must never, unless it, unless it really is doing something wrong. Be, be a public front facing and and not be a united front or, or, you know. Stimulating the debate in the direction of the travel of the strategy and the USP of the county. Um, and and it is so negative and destructive. Where, where, when, when sort of there's infighting or or suspicion or what are you up to? And I used to get when I chaired the LEP, you know, who elected you? You know, we're local authorities, we've had to go through elections and so why are you making all the decisions, you know, it's a fair challenge. Um, but, but, you know, the, I, I mean, I remember the days when, um. Norfolk and Suffolk, which was the boundary of the LEP, when they, they refused to meet in each other's territory. So I had to find a sticky carpet hotel in Beckles where. Where I could persuade on the border, uh Norfolk and Suffolk to come together. Uh, the next stage was that when we agreed we would meet in Norfolk, God help us. That Labour and Conservative councils wouldn't meet in the same room. And there was me doing the sort of shuttle diplomacy between the two. Happily, with time and with energy on all sides, those relationships became really constructive. And if we weren't happy or had something to say that was, you know, more upfront or some tough love between each other, the fact you said it. Was respectful, was respectfully received and and you, you know, you, you respect each other's working positions, even if you don't agree with them all the time. But cabinet collective responsibility is really important when you're front facing. Um. Otherwise, people will sense the division and think, well, that's just a, you know, a, a cat's in a sack and it's not worth being involved with.
Uh, and I don't think we'd want to be involved with it either. I mean, we didn't come to do that, we came to make an impact. Um, I think, you know, we've spent far too much time being reviewed by the centre in the last five years. I hope that changes. I mean, I was elected to the network by my peers. Um, I was elected um to be the leader in Hertfordshire by a mixture of. Uh, local gov- well, all the stakeholders that were there. And interestingly, when um Hertfordshire came to. Um, select the previous chief executive, I was involved in the selection process, which is. Um, was a very interesting and quite privileged place to be. But at the end of the day, whether we have um direct or indirect control over. Um, over money, it's the public's money. It's Essex's money, it's Hertfordshire's money, it's Suffolk's money. Um, and I believe we have a, a responsibility to be very open, transparent and accountable for that. Um, in, in, uh, in, in totally clear ways. Uh, otherwise we shouldn't be doing the job.
That's fantastic. And unfortunately, we've reached, reached the end of our time. Um, and I think we've had some really good engagement there and some great questions. If anyone does have any other questions that you haven't had time to ask, I feel like I have loads. But anyway, um. You know, we can, you can uh get in touch and we'll try and get answers to those. Um, the next steps will be that I will share some.
Zoe, just, just to interrupt you. Sorry. James Sinclair is now in despair. Because I think he's been trying to get, it looks like he's been trying to get his question in.
Oh, sorry, apologies. James, um, we definitely want to hear your question. Go ahead.
Yeah, very much.
Sorry.
Can, can you hear me, guys?
Yes.
Yeah, come now, yes, yeah.
I wasn't in despair. I often go like this, sorry. So I, I, I really wasn't. Um, I, I suppose my quick question, I was listening um to, to gentlemen earlier, you know, I'm one of those busy people, you know. I've got a lot of staff and a lot of businesses, but I'm also passionate about growing UK PLC. I want us to be a thriving economy. I'm very passionate about Essex, obviously where our business is based. Uh, for me to want to be hugely involved in this, I want to make sure that I make a difference and I think that's absolutely paramount to me. What I don't want is it to be like a local planning committee. Where everyone's just sitting around arguing and nothing gets done, and then it gets sent to Secretary of State to make the decision. Uh, uh, and I, I've, I've sat through lots of them in my business career and I just think, what a colossal waste of time, resource. And energy. And I want to help, you know, and I think, uh, I think our diverse portfolio of businesses and, uh, you know, our. Our experience, you know, I, I'm all gung ho, you know, I wanna, I wanna make a difference, but will I? And that, and how can I? And maybe just a little example of how a business owner that sat on one of these boards. Made a difference, yeah, just a little ten second story so that I know what I'm getting myself in for would be very helpful.
Uh, I'll, I'll give you one and I'm sure there's given others. So, um, when I took, I mean, obviously, yeah, we're going to have a change in structure now, so. You know, the proof of the pudding remains to be seen and eaten. Um, I was taken round Roxborne by the chief executive, Jeff Slatt, and my chief exec. For a tour around and we went to an industrial estate, a big industrial estate that had lots of logistics sheds. It had a big uh, um, Veolia plant at one end and it was served. From the main road by a very narrow bridge, very narrow. So you could imagine what a bottleneck this was. And nobody seemed to be wanting to do anything with sorting out what was a major impediment to trade and progress. And in Growth Deal Three, which was in the back end of twenty sixteen, we put together a hundred million pound bid from the county and we included in that. Um, some money for what is now the New River Bridge. Now, if Jeff hadn't taken us around on that. I would have known anything about that at all. It wouldn't have featured in the plans. We put it in the plans. Um, we got the money agreed. We delivered the bridge, pay presto. Now we've got a fully functioning industrial estate. That's one example. And I know that my colleagues will have others from their own readings as well. That's why we were put in place. The document to read is no stone unturned by Michael Hasenfeld. Goes right back, that stuff is still there. I met him about a month back, still very sharp and, and uh, and very keen on what we're doing. Those are good things. And when you go into the areas where you've seen money come through. And sometime, and these are not immediate projects, they take time to e- emerge. You do get a great satisfaction when you see stuff delivered. That you've had your hand on.
Let's quickly come back on it. So why could not the local counts or MPs deal with that on their own? What, how did you get a strategic advantage?
Um, why it hadn't been done? I, to be honest, I didn't trouble myself digging into it. The fact that it was. Not being done and I had the opportunity to put a business case forward, um, because there was a round of funding and we put a very solid case forward for it. Uh, and we were entrusted because of the structure that we had and the track record of delivering, which, you know, lots of the colleagues have had as well. You know, we took that decision to prioritise it and we got it done. That's what we were there for.
And James, from my point of view, um, uh, a, a, a lot of things, I mean, our, our business board has only had its second meeting, so we're not in, we're not, we, we're in ideas mode. We're not in a, I haven't got tick boxes to have achievements, but from the previous involvement in the LEP with business engagement. You know, uh, the business voice helped contribute thirty thousand more jobs uh in Norfolk and Suffolk that we had before. Hundred and sixty million pound inward investment and a lot of that investment was um public, public money, but leveraging private sector money. So business can really get involved and invest in the future of the economy on skills and all, all sorts of things. And my plea to you. Um, is, is yes, please, boards need people like you on them. In, there, there's, there's an impatience, uh, um. A, a strategic imperative, expertise and experience. I can sense you've got that in spades and if people like you don't come forward to serve on boards and offer your thinking. And trust the process, but be demanding of it. I go back to what I said very briefly before. Uh, our board isn't, isn't a talking shop, otherwise I wouldn't be interested to be involved in it. I've had enough of that uh, uh, over too many years. Uh, so it's action focused. What are the six key priorities? Who's going to do what by when to achieve them? Then when we've done that, what's next? And so that dynamism and energy that you've got, if I might say, um, is an essential component of any board and I wish you were in Suffolk.
Yeah, I came, I came and, sorry, I came and, and spent two hours or so with you, your team last week. There is an energy there. We've had two thousand business people, nineteen hundred and ninety something of us doing this. Pro bono, because we think it's the right thing to do for our economies. We get great satisfaction. There must be something that makes us want to stay with this and people are still staying with it. But there is an energy and an impatience, but there's also a care here because. When we take the money, however it's done, it has to be delivered. And I think that's the real evidence of what's gone through. And then the satisfaction that says. Ah, right, now I know why I volunteered for this.
But what I'm trying to, how symbiotic do the key stakeholders work? So we've got an idea as the, the, the new name for this LEP board. Um, how symbiotic does the central government, the local authority, the planning department, if that's needed, how? How well do people work together to actually get stuff over the line? Because. Uh, you know, that's my challenge is dealing with local authorities, even on just simple planning cases where they've got to put no money in. I mean, I'll give you an example. It took me two years to get permission to put a dinosaur park and I didn't even build anything, you know, I just. This is on my own site, just a little change of use. I think, God, this is so time consuming, like, you know, less jobs, you know, the, the. You know, they're, they're the things that frustrate me. So, i- do you have a power of getting. The symbiotic relationships to get things going at haste or is it just what I would go through in the usual world? Is there any advantages?
Well, I think just giving you examples of where it's worked. Um, I think when we see that, when we see this of the, the, the change of ownership of capital is going to be important here. We're going to have to test this, but it's our job to make it happen. Otherwise, I wouldn't stay with it. For the very reasons I would go off and do something else, you know.
Mark, I love that little, I love the little story of the bridge, but did you, what, I, I just want to know, did you manage to speak to the head of planning and then they. You know, worked quickly to get that over the line or was it still the same two year process?
We, you know, if you think about, we got, we got the, the money came to us at the back end of sixteen. Uh, it went through the entire process, including because it had to go through planning, it got planned and it got built. And it was built, I think, within two years of that.
The role does give you influence and access, James. Um, you know, it, it's no coincidence that I am. Friendly and work with all the upper tier leaders and all of the upper tier chief executives. I have access. You know, on speed dial to directors of regeneration. So there is an ability to influence properly. And steer and cajole and bully and do whatever's appropriate. And I go back to what I said right at the outset. There's a great advantage of not being elected or paid. Um, people do listen, particularly if you, you know, if you're bringing things that are constructive. That are different ways of thinking, that are, you know, helpful solutions.
I, I, I just want to add this, not for me personally to have that, but if we were trying to work on a, a thing for the county, you know, I just want to make sure that. That, that we can, you know, move forward and actually get it done. And, and, uh, you know, I, I, I feel comfort in those little pieces you said there.
I think that's an excellent question, James, and, you know, what we're trying to do mainly in Essex, and I think we've touched on it at various points, is. Not necessarily have the same, um, people coming forward for these opportunities. And it was really interesting to hear, Mark, what you said about. Um, how you're arranging things in Suffolk, you know, only eleven spaces on the board there, but actually engaging with the business community in a wider way by. Pulling together some of those really important businesses that haven't got the time through workshop or sort of, um, you know. Particular event on a particular topic. And then also the really, um, the, the bigger group of contacts that you've developed through your, um. Recruitment process that are now involved in particular work streams or particular, you know, focus on something you're doing around energy or whatever that is. Because that's a whole infrastructure of business engagement that you've created there in, in such a short amount of time. Um. And it's right, James, that you asked the question, is this board right for me or is it better for me to engage on some of these things in a slightly different way? And if you do want to have a bit more of a chat, um, we're happy to set that up, you know. If anyone is sat there thinking that they've got some key questions that haven't really been answered, do get in touch. We do want to talk to you. If anyone is sat there thinking that they've got some key questions that haven't really been answered, do get in touch. We do want to talk to you in terms of.
I just want to get stuff done. And if I feel like I can help and get stuff done, I'm all for it, baby. But if I feel like it's just a waste of time, then I'm not, you know, and that, that, I'm an entrepreneur. I get stuff done and I want to be able to help get stuff done. And that, that's why I'm asking these questions.
Yeah, brilliant. That's, that's really good. And that's great passion to hear. That's exactly the kind of thing that we, we also want to get stuff done. So the next steps will be that, following this event today, I'll share a copy of the recording. There are a number of people who were interested, who couldn't attend today. And also some bullet points and some headlines from what's been discussed. And I will also be back in touch with the next steps. As I said, we're quite early in the journey in developing this for Essex. And yeah, I, I, you know, want to keep you all interested and I'll, I'll be in touch with sort of how we can do that and how things are looking and what shape this might take for Great Essex in the coming weeks. Yeah, that's, that's all for today. So thank you very much for your time. Thanks so much to our speakers. It's been absolutely fantastic to hear such honesty and sort of real experiences. And I really, a heartfelt thank you for your time and what you've brought to the session today. And we've got some great comments in the chat about the good discussion as well. So I feel like it's just the start really of our journey and I'll be in touch. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care. Thanks.